Good evening, everyone. It being seven o'clock in a quorum present, I'm going to call this meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board for June 11th to order. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 28, 2025, this meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so in person or through the Zoom meeting application. The Zoom link can be found on the town's website. First this evening, we have administrative notes, beginning with minutes for May 14, 2025. Any questions, comments, changes to the minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, and everybody, I believe, is physically present. A show of hands, all in favor. Unanimous. Next this evening, we have Form A plans. We have A 4902 Kathleen M. Garudi, 58 Black Cat Road, map 98, lots 40A and 40B-1, lot line adjustment. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Grandy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. Discussion? Seeing none. Call for vote. All in favor. Unanimous. Next this evening, we have a, an appointment to the Master Plan Committee. So the Master Plan Committee, we are toward the tail end of our, our efforts. We've gone through almost all of the public input. Now we're going to start getting some of the drafts from the consultants, taking into account the various surveys and information we've received. But we've had a member, a public member, who has said that they are leaving town and therefore wanted to step off and allow for someone else to step back on. So we have three applicants who have put forth, Thomas Jacinto, Michaela Derkinder, sorry, it's Kinderen, and Shirley, and I'm going to apologize if I get it wrong, Adubufour. So, Mr. Jacinto, why don't you step forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
So why don't you briefly introduce yourself and tell us why you want to be on the Master Plan Committee?
Excellent. Well, thank you for considering me. My name is Thomas Jacinto. I'd like to be on the Master Plan Committee. In my run for the planning board, I got to meet with citizens from across all of Plymouth, and I really got to hear all of their concerns and what they would like to see for the town moving forward. In attending the Master Plan Committee meetings, I think that people are doing a great job, and I'd just love to be a part of everything that they've put together so far, and really try to bring this to a finish, like carry it over the finish line. Meeting with the consultants and putting in my two cents myself, seeing the way that everybody's interpreting all of the data that we've had put forth, I think is very interesting, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Great. Questions from the board? Mr. Bennett?
No questions.
Mr. Mann?
Yeah, I wondered about the process. I have a couple of questions potentially for each candidate, but I'm not sure what depth or detail you'd like to see.
It's your, your right to ask whatever you choose.
So I'll ask Mr. Jacinto, first of all, what do you see as the most important long-term priorities for our town?
I think per the original Master Plan Committee, it's affordability, making sure that Plymouth stays affordable for everybody here to move here, for people to stay here, and people to thrive here.
I'll ask an additional question. What do you imagine this town will look like in 20 years, and what role should the master plan play in that?
I envision in 20 years, the town's going to look fairly similar. We're going to maintain the town centers that we've had already in preserving our open space. Probably those town centers will expand a little bit and have greater density, but I would hope that we're able to keep them all separate with our own special types of charm and sustainable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Mr. Smith?
I understand you have attended other master plan meetings, is that right?
Yes.
And what have you taken away from that, that process of attending the meetings and seeing the feedback?
I see that everybody here in town has their own voice and their own opinion, and I think it's really important to be able to voice themselves and for us to try to find a middle ground across everybody in town to get the best possible outcome for the planning that we want to put forth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions.
Thank you. I have no questions. Thank you very much for stepping up, Mr. Jacinto, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Michaela Derkinderen. Is Michaela on Zoom?
We reached out a couple times, but did not get a response.
Okay. So next, we have Shirley Adubufour. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Shirley Adubufour, and you got the pronunciation right, so thank you so much.
So same thing. Why don't you just introduce yourself? Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Master Plan Committee?
Yes, thank you so much for the question. So the reason why I would like to be a part of the planning, Master Planning Committee, is I've noticed a lot of the goals has been around, you know, economic development, sustainability, and it goes forth with transportation, accessibility for the community. And being a part of the community for over a year or so, as I came here after getting married, I noticed that a lot of the sustainability is, is not accessible for most residents because, you know, the transportation has been difficult. But something that I'm bringing to the table is understanding when we talk about accessibility, what are the ways that the community needs to be effective, or what are the ways that we can have engagement so that it's not driving with community, which can mean more development within the community, creating more resources or engagement across board, or also having more hands-on, hands-on engagement from the community that develops a way for students' transportation to schools can be more effective, or also seeing their results. So these are just some of the ways where I'm interested, to be a part of a committee that is committed to helping the residents, but also drive the push forward for Plymouth to go in a, in a better improvement on force. Something that I really have noticed is throughout the time, there's been talk about sustainability, and my question is, what does sustainability look for community? Is it just having more privacy within the land? Is it having effectively? Is it for the economy to look better, for Plymouth Town to expand? So I've noticed a lot of those ways can be looked in different ways. And another reason why I'm really interested is to just see, just be a part of a community that wants to help the people, that wants to help them to have more of engagement. Even though Plymouth is a town, a town can do more as much of a city can do. So how can we make sure that the community feels like their needs are being met?
Great. Thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Grandy?
Thanks, Chairman. No questions. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Mann?
So to be fair, I'll ask you two questions as well. What balance should the master plan strike between development, open space preservation, and infrastructure needs, in your opinion?
Yes. I think when a lot of times when it comes to infrastructure and balancing resources, a lot of times it comes with budgeting, or trying to see, is there enough resources to allocate? For instance, I've noticed a lot of balancing sustainability comes with, is there enough transportation allowed for the community, meaning are students able to get from one town to one town without it being difficult for them? And I see first, the first priority is to see what has been done in the past that's been effective. Has it been more sustainable to import more recreation centers for the community? Has it been more effective to make more housing more accessible for people in the town? What are the, looking at, let's say, the four or the three goals that's been more successful, or what ways can we make sure that within those goals is going to be sustainable for the town? So for, in this case, when I look at sustainability, I look at seeing what can the town afford? Because we can't just jump straight into allocating resources if it's not within the town's budget. But then how can we make sure that while we're looking at its sustainability, we're able to meet the needs of the community, but also to push for more funding for the community itself? So I hope this answered your question.
Thank you. Are you familiar with any state regional planning regulations or tools like 40B, MBTA communities, TDRs, and the like?
Could you explain further, please?
There are various tools that are used in development to create equitable balance in terms of intensely developed, densely developed areas and open space. There's the MBTA communities, which is a new state plan that requires communities to come up with a certain amount of housing in excess of what they're already having as affordable. There's a variety of those tools that the Master Plan Committee and the planning board itself deal with on a regular basis, and I mentioned a few. I just wondered if you had any familiarity with them.
So for housing per se, for the specifics that you mentioned, I don't have any specific, specific ideas for those specifics, but I do understand that when it comes to within the state borders and understanding what can be used and what cannot be used, I understand that within housing, making affordable cannot be sustainable across board. So when it comes to housing, experience that I had was within the campus, how do we make sure that each community was able to afford the housing, was looking at the housing rate, or also looking at what was able to be put? So let's say, which land space was already, are we able to use the land space? Is it, is it separated for being used for just land use? Is it separated for using for housing? So seeing which, which ones is accessible for the community to be able to use. So what's, that's what I had familiar with, for which land is accessible and which land is not accessible to be used for affordable housing. So looking at those different variety of needs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I'll ask the same question. Are you familiar with the master plan process to date, and have you been attending any of the meetings?
I'm sorry, could you please repeat the question?
Yes. Are you familiar with where the master plan process is now, and have you been attending any of the public meetings?
Yes. So I understand that the process now, I looked on the site, and it looked like they're looking for someone, expertise with consulting within education and trying to reform more of the open space and trying to do more community development, making it more engagement within the community. So I've attended one, and I've noticed that the process was mainly discussion and trying to see what has, what are the results, or what has it been so far from the community? Let's see, any surveys, et cetera. And I noticed that within the discussion, there's been more of making sure, how do we not just go from discussing the needs from the community, but also going to implement it? So those are the processes that I've noticed from the previous meeting that I've attended, and I've noticed their focus has a lot been on housing, and also, you know, the space and recreation for the town. How can we make it more accessible and also incorporate more community development?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett.
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. So my question to you is, have you taken any of the master plan surveys online?
No, I have not.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming forward. Thank you very much for volunteering. We always appreciate everyone who comes forward. It's, it's never easy, and it's always tough, and we greatly appreciate and respect everybody who steps forward, willing to volunteer for our town. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
So the process, and I'm going to ask Mr. Smith to vote as well on this, the process I'm going to ask is, we're going to do a vote for every candidate. So the candidate who gets the most votes will be the chosen person. So we're going to start with, again, same order. Mr. Jacinto, all in favor of Mr. Jacinto? Okay, that's every member. Anyone seeking a vote for Ms. Derkinderen? No? Okay. And for Ms. Adubufour? Okay, thank you. So by unanimous vote, the board has selected Mr. Jacinto. Ms. Adubufour, again, thank you for coming forward, and please don't be discouraged because of this one time. There are many opportunities in the town, and we appreciate your enthusiasm and your energy, and hope you will apply for one or more in the future, and I'm sure we will find plenty of places to use your skill set.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Jacinto, just a reminder, you do need to be sworn in, so at some point, please head to the clerk's office and go do that.
Absolutely. I just want to thank the board for the appointment, and I'm looking forward to bringing the Master Plan Committee over the finish line.
Very good. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda this evening, we have a public hearing. Planning Board of the Town of Plymouth will hold a public hearing at the 1820 courtroom, 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts, on Wednesday, June 11, 2025, at 7:05 PM, to hear the petition of Sheridan Home Builders, Inc., requesting approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled Definitive Subdivision and Rural Density Development Plan for the creation of 49 residential lots located at 553 Waram Road, assessors parcels 120-000-004-000, 120-000-001-013, and 120-000-001-015 in the RR Zoning District. The petitioner or his representative, or any other person interested and desiring to be heard on this request, should appear at the time and place designated. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Rob Dambroso, attorney at law with Dambroso Law LLC here in Plymouth. I'm here on behalf of Sheridan Home Builders, Inc. Matt Sheridan, the principal of that entity, is here with me tonight. I think everyone knows why we're here, including, I would assume, Mr. Mann. Welcome, welcome aboard. Welcome back, I should say. But if, just to rehash very briefly, so we were here three weeks ago and got a warm reception, a unanimous approval for this rural density development plan for the site. Again, I won't rehash all the details, but there was significant 60-plus percent open space, landing some TDR rights, and three special permits issued as a result of that hearing. Just out of abundance of caution, because we, there was some concern, we had a little sidebar, Lee and I did, right before the hearing wrapped, as, as some of you will recall, I wanted to be sure that it was clear that the board was approving a definitive subdivision. I think, I think the board was, but there was some concern that maybe it wasn't clearly advertised that way. So just to be sure that everyone had fair notice, I think that the safe course was to re-advertise. So we're back here tonight for the limited purpose of seeking your endorsement of a definitive subdivision plan. That plan has not changed in any respect from what was submitted to you on May 14, what we discussed on May 14 that was submitted prior to that. So again, same plan. We already have the substantive relief that we sought in hand at this point, and we're here in the hopes that you will endorse the subdivision plan, but happy to answer any questions you may have relative to that. I guess I would add that the waivers that are being sought in connection with the subdivision plan were also presented at the last hearing and approved as, as the record reflects. So again, nothing new tonight, but that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff?
Good evening, everyone. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I just wanted to state for you the background. Mr. Dambroso covered this. You've seen this plan. The layout has not changed. This is really just a clarification of what you're voting on, this definitive subdivision. While we did receive the original form application at the time of the submission of the three special permits that you granted on May 14, the plan set just needed some additional signature blocks and things of that nature. So all of the material, the layout, what you approved last time, it's consistent with what you have before you tonight. So what we've done for this decision that's drafted in your packet is largely the same as the decision you signed on the 14th of May. It's just got slightly less detailed because we've taken out some of the components that are specific to a special permit approval, and this is really more focusing on that definitive subdivision, which is the roadway layout and looking at those specifics of that. So without any other detail, I'll turn it back to the board. Happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Okay, I'm going to bring it to first the audience. Is there anybody in the room desiring to be heard on this matter? Seeing no one. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
So if you're on Zoom and want to be heard, please raise your hand. I know there's someone on the phone if they'd like to be heard. It's *9 to raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. With no one seeking to be heard, do I have a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close the public comment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor. Mr. Smith, you do vote on this. Unanimous. Public comment is now closed. I'll bring it back to the board for any questions for Mr. Dambroso or Mr. Sheridan. Start, Mr. Smith?
I just have a couple of questions. On the May 29 DPW comments, some of the items are listed as partially satisfied. Is it the intent to resolve all of the issues on that, those comments?
Yes, sir. I think, you know, they're, they're all capable of being addressed, and, you know, we view them as, you know, I don't want to call them ministerial in nature, but nothing that's going to rock the boat in terms of the overall plan. So, so the answer's yes.
So if I could, the process also is that once the subdivision is voted, you have to wait 20 days before you can endorse the subdivision plan itself. So what will happen is between now and when that plan is brought back to the board for signature, we as staff will make sure that all those conditions are addressed. If that's 20 days, 30 days, 60 days, that the plan will not come back for endorsement until we have something that says everything's satisfied. Or if there's something that there's a disagreement, that would come back to the board to say, here's this one issue that they're in disagreement on, and you would adjudicate that. But again, any of those conditions will have to be addressed before the plan is submitted to you for endorsement.
Okay, thank you. The only other question I had, just a minor one, there's a recreation park area identified, and it's, it's a small area. I'm just wondering what's the intention there?
Good evening. Matt Sheridan, Sheridan Home Builders. So as I had said in the previous presentation three weeks ago, the intent with that recreation area is going to be, whether it be basketball, pickleball, some sort of outdoor park patio area. So I'm still working through those details, because the biggest hurdle with all that is making sure that costs within the subdivision stay down. that costs within the subdivision stay down. And when you start adding different recreational aspects, the cost of the insurance actually goes through the roof because of the public use. So, with that, I am still working out the details, because it actually is going to be a truly public space, because I am making it available to all the White Island residents as well. So, with that, I still, I couldn't give the board a definitive, but that's what I know it's going to entail. Some sort of pickleball, basketball, if it's a swing set, but that's the idea, that it's just a small playground area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Mann?
Thank you. Am I going through there? First of all, I want to commend Mr. Sheridan for taking the long way around, that is, for holding preliminary meetings with the community, twice, I believe, and with the board itself before making an official submission to the board. Thank you for that. That should, in my opinion, be the norm. I also want to acknowledge, I understand that tonight's meeting is officially concerning, I believe they were saying subdivision approval. Mr. Hartman told me road layout and construction standards for the development at 553 Waram Road. As a newly elected board member, though, I feel it's important that I raise questions and offer my own perspective on projects that come before me regardless of what may or may not have been done before my tenure began, because otherwise I would not have the opportunity to be on the record for these projects or others. So, to begin with, I'm going to offer some opinions and a few questions that either staff or a representative of Sheridan should feel free to respond to or not. First of all, this development, perhaps all development, in my opinion, should be viewed with a wide lens. In this case, that means looking at it from the perspective that considers both its location in regards to the 1,000-plus homes of the Red Brook development, its placement within the existing crowded cottages and homes on Waram Road, and as regards the priority habitat, wetlands, and aqua protection district that is set within, and from the perspective of residents of this area and the town overall, who are concerned with many issues, including protecting the water, woods, and wildlands that are in such abundance in that area of town. So, as regards Red Brook, then, to begin with, it's always my understanding, it's always been my understanding, that in exchange for the preservation of priority habitat, rare species and the like, that the developer also owned, that the Red Brook development would be allowed greater density within a prescribed area. And part of the rationale for that, at least as I understood it, was to limit that density to specific areas and to deny or impede similar density in adjacent areas. And that was also what I believe the residents of Red Brook expected, to live in a well-planned community that was set within and indeed marketed as an area rich in natural gifts. I'm not sure that is happening. On the northern side of Waram Road, there are now many other developments that in many ways seem to mimic Red Brook in style, and it appears in density. And seeing that development, seeing that density, I'm interested in knowing how that was justified or permitted specifically, and specifically whether those developments also used TDRs to qualify for that density. On this specific site, 553 Waram Road, the development is slated for nearly four times as many septic systems, wells, and homes as would otherwise be allowed, as I understand it, under its underlying zoning. So, apart from addressing, adding desirable housing, though just the minimum required affordable units, I'm not convinced this project offers much in the way of benefit to this area or to the town overall. Backtracking a bit, I acknowledge that I don't have the experience where TDRs and RDD designation are both utilized, and this appears to be a kind of double tipping, to my inexperienced eye at least. How are the two special permits or designations working together, allowing the density, if that is happening? I'd like to understand that more. Would the density have been allowed here without the TDRs? The materials I have reviewed also show two isolated vegetated wetlands, and acknowledges that at least one is likely a vernal pool. I may be misunderstanding the present regulations, but I believe there should be a 200-foot buffer around something that could be a vernal pool. The wetlands can't be developed, so as I understand it, should not be considered in the open space that contributes to the required amount necessary to qualify for increased density. Overall, I'm concerned that Red Brook's density is spreading, that we are permitting maximum density in or adjacent to priority habitat, and we are placing almost 50 new septic systems and lawns in a Zone 2 aqua protection district in or adjacent to, again, priority habitat. I'm also concerned with the traffic, the 100 or so cars that may be generated by this development, plus hundreds of others in adjacent developments, have no place to go, as I understand it, but onto the narrow roller coaster that is Waram Road in that area. As I said, these are observations, concerns, and questions that I've been told are not directly relevant to tonight's business, which is the review of the road layout and construction standards, as I understand it. Having just come on the board after many of the elements of this project were approved, I didn't have the opportunity to weigh in on this, on its merits, or debate its deficiencies before the official process began. An opportunity that, again, let me commend Mr. Sheridan for allowing. Thank you.
Mr. Sheridan, if you'd like to respond to any of that?
Excuse me, certainly. So, that was a lot of statement, Mr. Mann, so I'm just going to kind of pull out what I retained and what I heard, to me, the pertinent things. So, I guess first, I just want you to understand, I'm not actually associated with Red Brook, and this doesn't have anything to do with Red Brook at all, just...
I understand that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. In terms of the overall benefit to the area, that was one thing that I know you had just commented on, and I think you actually touched on it with what I did for community outreach with this project. And not to speak out of turn, but I don't think it's very often this board actually hears residents speak in favor of projects at public comment. And there was a lot of that in our previous meeting when I got the unanimous vote. So, in terms of an overall benefit to the area, with what I was offering the residents, that in terms of traffic mitigation, improvements, things that they felt they had been overlooked on, I feel like I exceeded those expectations with a benefit to them. In terms of affordability, I know you had touched on that with what I was offering for affordable housing. My starting price point for these homes is going to be $500,000. The median sales price average in the Town of Plymouth is, I don't want to say the wrong number, so I'll say between $850,000 and $900,000 for a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home. I'm offering a three-bedroom, two-bathroom home for $500,000. So, in terms of affordability and deep cuts, it doesn't get any better than that. You're talking $300,000 to $400,000 off the top with everything I'm offering to the public. There's no strings attached to that. It's not actual AMI-based or anything else. That's purely what I'm offering the public. So, was there anything else you want me to touch on? Because I feel like I got your affordability, your, oh, your open space. I heard what you said about the open space in regards to the wetlands. So, I'm not entirely familiar with every aspect of the open space, rules and regulations, but I do believe wetlands can be considered part of your open space, because the way it reads in the definition is it's untouched, unimpacted areas. Drainage can actually be considered part of open space. Just so you are aware, if we removed our open space from the calculations, excuse me, the wetlands from our open space calculations, our percent would drop by 1.2%. So, we would be at like 59.2 instead of 59, 60 or 61. So, I hope that answers some of your questions with my overall feel for the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the other ones I have notes, you referenced a Red Brook-like development. What are you referring to?
I'm referring to all those developments.
There have not been any recent developments on Born Road and...
Well, the ones that are on the northern side of Waram Road.
And it's still, I had a little, because there's, the only thing I'm aware of...
Are they all Red Brook?
It's all Red Brook.
It's all Red Brook.
It's all Red Brook. There is no other non-Red Brook. So, what's happened with Red Brook is they've got about 1,600 acres of open space with a 400-acre area of development. So, it's a fairly densely developed area. So, we've compressed what could have happened throughout the entire development into that 400 or so acres. But, yes, anything that you see there is all Red Brook. The second thing you've said, you talked about the TDRs. So, the AD Makepeace has identified and created far more TDRs than they can land within that 400 acres. So, there are really two options. One is for them to sell them, as they're doing here, and land them in another site. The only other option would be for the planning board to work with them to allow for additional units within the Red Brook development. And we know, as we've gone through that, that's a very controversial thing. So, again, two options with these TDRs is either increase the density at Red Brook and allow more development within that 400-acre footprint, or look at other sites like this that they could sell them to. The third option would be, many of these TDRs have already been permanently protected, but there are some that they haven't put a CR on. The other option would be, they would not actually do anything with those TDRs, and they would be available for development or some other use in the future. So...
Wasn't there a use, I can't remember how long ago it was, Mr. DiMascio?
Yeah, he bought one TDR.
He bought one TDR.
Yeah. So, the other one you said, so, we have three special permits that were granted, affordable housing. And it's always interesting that oftentimes our goal is to try to minimize development, but then we have this conflict, because we say affordable housing is needed. So, the special permit for affordable housing, by nature, increases density, when oftentimes our goal is to decrease. So, we always, at least at a staff level, have this conflicting goals that we want to kind of minimize, especially in these areas, development, but then we turn around and say, we want you to increase it, increase development with affordable. But we have the special permit for affordable housing, the special permit for RDDs, and both of those special permits gives the planning board the authority to waive many of the requirements, frontage from 200 feet to, you could actually go as low as zero, minimum lot size, all those things that you can compress the development in to create open space. So, I would say that the TDR, special permit, the affordable, that increases density, and then the RDD, which allows flexibility in design, all were designed to work hand in hand, to allow for the most flexible options. Instead of telling somebody, you have to have 60,000 square feet, 200 feet of frontage, and just, let's just cookie cutter everywhere. So, again, I'd say it's not a double dip, the whole intent here is to try to have, or that would be a triple dip, to have all three of those work in conjunction with each other.
Is there, isn't there a, again, I'm not totally conversant in the zoning regulations. I saw 150%. Does that relate to RDDs, meaning if you have an RDD, you can increase up to 150%?
In existing neighborhoods. So, the 150 was related to existing neighborhoods. So, what, the way the bylaw is written, if you have something like this where you haven't, it's a new development, whoever buys into this, be aware, because you've got this density. The 150% means that if you go into an existing neighborhood and say, I'm going to now take my five lots, or 10 lots, and I'm going to add five more, that that's the most you can do, that you can't come into the 10 lots and create 20. So, that people who are living there, there'll be an increase. And I think the thought process was, you're talking about in a conventional neighborhood, something that has a density of one unit per three acres. So, to increase the density by 50% in an existing neighborhood isn't a big deal. In a case like this, where it's a new neighborhood, that it only applies to what you can do in an existing neighborhood, so that, again, if you have an approved subdivision and somebody comes in and says, I want to bump my density, it's capped at that 50%, so that the people living there may see additional housing, but not at a higher level like the one we see. And yes, to your question, without TDRs, the density here would have been 14 units?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that, having seen this project, I believe, four times now, three times here, plus steering committee, I have to say that Mr. Sheridan's outreach has been outstanding, and I think we covered that at length the last time he was here. I think it's a very telling fact that all of the residents, if I remember correctly, all those that spoke out were in favor of development, and I don't remember that there were any who spoke against it, if memory serves. His commitment to affordability, capping the purchase price at $500,000 is unbelievable. That's terrific. That's, you know, that kind of gives me hope that my kids might be able to afford a home here someday. I think his, and I think Mr. Mann might have missed out on the lengthy discussion we had about the traffic mitigation, which, you know, there's going to be a trial attempt at speed tables, if that's correct?
That's correct. It's the pilot program I'm creating with the DPW. Not to get into the whole thing, but we're going to temporarily install speed humps, try them for a year. If the rubber speed humps work, we'll remove them and install permanent ones, and then we're going to gift them to the town, so that way they can use them someplace else.
I think that's a terrific idea, because, you know, that may be something that may not work out, you know, it may be something, be careful what you wish for, and the neighborhood may not be in favor in the end. I think, you know, my hope is that they will be. But I think that that's a brilliant idea, and I think you've managed that well. And this neighborhood has been crying out for help in traffic for years. I've heard from constituents down there at length, that they are...
Mr. Bennett, just so you know too, part of what I proposed to the board was, I was actually going to hire Benas to do an impact study for a stop sign. And I've already authorized them to do that, and I'm expecting the results back next week. So, based off of how that goes with, if we're going to be allowed to do a few additional stop signs on Waram Road, that'd be part of my proposal to DPW for all of the improvements on the area. But I have already hired Benas to do that study, and we're anticipating the results next week.
Thank you for that, Mr. Sheridan. I think that's, again, excellent. I think you've set the bar pretty high for any future developers. So, in closing, I guess, is that as far as approval going forward, I think I have a very full faith and respect for the professionals in both our planning staff and in our DPW engineering staff. I've dealt with them several times at length, and I think that they have the town's best interest, and the development goes through incredible amount of scrutiny that most people don't see behind the scenes here. And that, as you can see, some of the DPW comments and everything are fairly lengthy, and I think they, that I have no concerns that they won't be addressed. So, for those reasons, I'm very much in favor of this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Grandy?
Thank you. Through the chair. This project's been reviewed in depth quite a few times. As we heard from Mr. Bennett, he saw it four times. This is the third or fourth time I've seen it and discussed it and asked a question. So, I've already asked all of my questions, and again, they've been asked again this evening, and I appreciate the presentation you've made multiple times, and the work you did with the community to get engagement for everybody as far as this project is concerned. So, again, thank you. And, Chairman, I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. So, addressing, even though it's really not the issue before us tonight, the overall merit of this project. Based on the input of the residents, who would be most affected by this, this board decided that additional density being requested was warranted, as it was in exchange for the developer's agreement to provide overall greater affordability, more open space than was required, public access to that open space, and traffic mitigation on Waram Road itself. None of those things can be mandated by this board. We have literally no legal authority to require any of that. Nonetheless, it was voluntarily offered to us, and more to the point, voluntarily offered to the residents of Plymouth, particularly those who would be impacted by this. These are specific things that the residents have encouraged us to do as part of the master plan process. They've asked us for diversity of housing at different affordability levels. They've asked us to try and incorporate open space and public access to open space whenever possible, to create corridors for open space when we can, and to do what we can to mitigate traffic whenever possible with new development. So, I will echo Mr. Bennett's sentiment when he says, I believe you have set the bar very high, and we do appreciate that. So, thank you, Mr. Sheridan.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartman?
I just want to note for the record, so this is subdivision control, so unfortunately, state law only allows the... state law only allows the official voting of Chris to be counted on special permits. I think it's great to include him in votes, as you have done, but just for the record, this is a vote for the four board members. The quantum of vote to pass is three. The motion would be to approve the waivers as well as the subdivision itself.
Thank you.
Motion so made. If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the subdivision and special waivers per the recommendations of staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Mann. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Again, I'll ask Mr. Smith not to vote on this one then.
All right, I think you could have, we could put it in. It just won't show up in the official vote. It's your call.
Well, Mr. Smith put in the effort. I believe Mr. Smith gets to at least express what his vote would have been if it were to be counted. So that said, all in favor. It is unanimous. Thank you again, Mr. Sheridan.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our event, our agenda for this evening. I did accidentally skip over the public announcements, so I am going to just very quickly make a couple of public announcements. The latest community master plan survey is now online and will be available until June 20th. There have been some functional changes made to make it easier to complete, and some definitions of terms have been added, so residents have a little bit more clarity as to what they're being asked. You can choose to do some or all of the exercises, so please encourage your friends and neighbors to participate. The more responses we get, the more the plan will reflect the needs of the entire community. The open space committee has an opening for a planning board appointee. An open space committee member has been elevated to the select board and has vacated her position. She will be missed on the open space committee, but we therefore look for new volunteers. So those who are interested in applying for that committee assignment, please do so on the town's website, and the appointment will be made along with other committee appointments from the planning board at our next meeting on June the 25th. Any other notices from members of the planning board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Recording stopped.